Their interest is discussed. New Jersey open. Their interest is discussed.
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassaldon?
Here.
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Pixley? Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman? Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardman?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
It was like the great Oz.
We will now. And we have the following, as soon as the sunshine comes out, so we have a ten hole and four dash twelve and thirteen. The Highland Park Board of Regimeation will now meet in closed session to discuss engine personnel. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session and in accordance with the bench. Four dash seventeen. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I would love a recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Second.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassaldon? Dr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Pixley? Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman?
Here.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ms. Vardman?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Like the nation to the land, I think of America as a true republic from which it stands, one nation under God, into its own liberty and justice for all. We have a community, a community that's meeting on about this week, safety, about course, motivating moments, six for each knowledge, and that's why. In addition to sort of having meetings, we're being able to, and we can even, and then we'll be serving it.
My, my dream posting. We're waiting for this.
The next committee agenda is four minutes from the hybrid workshop meeting and a session from September eighteen twenty five, I believe that'd be those minutes.
Second. I did.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassaldon?
Yeah.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll start with the report for Irving. Irving has had a busy month of learning, new experiences, and getting into the groove of school. The Week of Respect was full of fun, including the chalk walk, a record-breaking walk, and Roll to School Day with nearly 200 people in attendance, a concert by Highland Park's own Mr. Ray, and a visit from our Highland Park Fire Department. A huge thanks to the fire department for always taking the time to teach our students the importance of fire safety. We love our new hats, too. Another thanks to the Highland Park Borough for sponsoring The Illusion Maker, who had the children laughing and taking part in games in the three R Circus Reduce, Reuse and Recycle. Our staff is becoming acquainted with the New Jersey Inclusion Project, and our core team has been meeting to come up with a clear vision, action items, and reviewing the data from an earlier needs assessment. This work is grounded in making every child and staff member feel seen, valued, and supported in a positive school climate.
Okay, and I'll be talking about Bartle's report, so they said that October has been a busy and exciting month at Bartle. We started with the Week of Respect from October sixth through tenth, and students took part in the Spirit Week activities focused on kindness, respect, and acceptance. On October ninth, we celebrated Walk and Roll to School Day, which has a big success, and they highlighted the fact that anyone under seventeen should wear their helmets when they're biking, scooting, riding a scooter, or skating. And they said our second graders had a special visit from the fire department on October thirteenth. They learned about the fire safety and got to see the firefighters gear up close, and they said that the book fair is coming to Bartle the week of October twentieth. And we're looking forward to the LEAD U Assembly on October twenty second and the Illusion Maker Assembly on October twenty ninth. Parent-teacher conferences will be held October twenty second through twenty fourth, and these are half-days for students, and October thirty first will also be a half-day.
I'll continue with the middle school. They started their school-wide positive incentive program this week. Our SLT determined which core values we want to see and celebrate in our students. We will be celebrating middle school pride, which stands for perseverance, respect, integrity, discipline, and empathy. For the month of October, students will be nominated for demonstrating perseverance. At the end of each week, three nominations will be randomly selected, and those students will receive owl bucks to the school store. At the end of each month, the class with the most nominations will receive, will receive a grade-level prize. Last week was the Week of Respect. Our peer mediators worked to create a lesson about conflict versus bullying and presented it to all of their peers. The students were phenomenal in presenting. And last week was also their Spirit Week and pep rally, and they want to note that the eighth graders won. Parent-teacher conferences were that week, and they were thrilled to have all the parents come and meet about their children's progress and thank everyone who came out.
And finally, the high school. They said that the Spirit Week was a huge success. Our students and staff showed tremendous school pride throughout the week, and it was wonderful to see so much enthusiasm and participation. The home football game brought out a fantastic crowd. While the team didn't come away with the win, the stands were full and the energy was incredible. The highlight of the week was our homecoming dance, which drew 205 students, and the event was filled with music, laughter, great memories, and we're proud of the students for making it such a positive and respectful celebration. And they thanked the staff who helped make the event run so smoothly. We just had parent-teacher conferences last week. It was a great way for families to connect with the teachers, discuss student progress, and strengthen, strengthen the homeschool partnership that supports the student access, success, sorry. Okay, that's it.
Thank you so much for that report, and it's so nice to hear all the positive things going on at schools. And I'm especially happy to hear about the dance attendance, because I know that there is, I think another township that they canceled there, it's so fascinating. So, really nice to hear that we have students engaged in those kinds of activities after school. Are there any comments or questions for our students?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn our attention now to Dr. Suska.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's great to see lots of friendly and fun faces in the crowd tonight. I'm excited to, keeping on the positivity train of all the great things happening, I'd first like to start my report by welcoming Ms. McNally up to the podium. We have two deserving Irving students to spotlight tonight.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for taking the time. This is always one of my favorites, because it's not often that we get to talk about our little ones. So, thank you, families, for being here. Thank you to my staff who were able to come. It means a lot. All right, in no particular order, I'm just going to throw the dice up, and we're going to start with kindergarten. Sound good? All right, so my kindergartner that we are nominating for Irving this evening, his name is Jace. Would you like to come up with me? Ms. Curtin has been telling me so many awesome things about you, and you're doing the best job. So, let's see, you are an absolute joy in kindergarten, and I would definitely agree with that. You are responsible, you're caring, and you're always ready to lend a hand to a friend or a teacher. You know your way around Irving, and I know how much you love coming to the office and bringing your friends to the office. You know the way and the way back, right? Okay, you don't, you don't ever take a shortcut? All right, you work hard every single day, you're always trying your best, and you always show what it means to be a true Irving learner. You are a bucket filler through and through, and your kind words and big smile brighten everyone's day in the classroom. We're so proud of how much you have grown this year. Way to go, Jace, congratulations. Peace. Thank you, Jace. All right, up next, I'm going to move to first grade and to Sloan. Would you like to come up? Another awesome Irving dragon. So Sloan, you are a true Irving superstar. I know you know that already. You're not just a first grader, you are a friend to everyone, and you are a shiny example of kindness, respect, and care. You are always ready with a helping hand, a bright smile, and a way to make everyone feel included in your classroom. I know every time I go in and Mr. Maruka goes in, we always talk about how kind you are to your friends and how you're always helping somebody, and you love sitting at the big table. Would you agree? You have positive energy that lights up every corner of Irving, and you show us all just how wonderful it is to be part of Team Irving. But beyond your cheerful spirit, because you're always happy, your special talent for helping your friends learn make you a truly remarkable student, and we are so lucky to have you in first grade. So congratulations to Sloan.
Hey, thank you, Ms. McNally, and congratulations again to our wonderful Irving students. Let's hear it again for them. I love Ms. Knapp's quote, "Spread kindness like confetti," and it's great to hear that there's a lot of that happening at Irving. I'm excited now to bring up Dr. Morello from our athletic department, our Athletic Program and Sports Medicine Administrator, to highlight a very deserving student athlete, affectionately known as Dr. Mark.
So I first want to say good evening to the community, to Dr. Suska and the board. Tonight's a very special night. I have two speeches, one from Coach Ruck, who is at the GMC Conference Meeting for Soccer right now, so I have his speech. But I'm going to start with just saying how excited I am to share this remarkable milestone with you. Over the last four months, getting to watch you play, getting to know you and your family, you truly resemble exactly what we're looking for in student athletes here, both on and off the field. So our very own Jahan Maladnik has officially broken the Highland Park girls' soccer career goals record, which stood at sixty-two, and you broke that a couple, last month at sixty-three, and I think you're at, what, now seventy-three? So. It's really an extraordinary accomplishment that speaks not only to your skill on the field, but also to her relentless work ethic, perseverance, and leadership. From the moment she first put on an Owls jersey after talking to Coach Ruck, and you've really demonstrated dedication to your team and the sport. Game after game, practice after practice, you've shown commitment to excellence that really inspires other athletes and students here, and especially the younger athletes throughout the district. Your record-breaking goal wasn't just another point on the scoreboard, it was really a culmination of all those years of hard work, countless hours of training, I'm sure, and the unwavering just love and passion for soccer. Your achievement's also a testament to the support of your family and the coaches and teammates who've really helped you shape into the outstanding student athlete that you are today, and you really represent the very best of Highland Park, talent, determination, and really, community spirit. So on behalf of Highland Park Athletics, I want to congratulate you for setting a new standard for our girls' soccer program, very high standard that I have a feeling will stand for quite some time. But your name will forever be a part of Highland Park history, inspiring future Owls to dream and, dream big and push beyond their limits. So please join me in celebrating Jahan for her historic accomplishment and for representing Highland Park with pride and excellence. I'm going to talk a little nicer than Coach Ruck. So this is Coach Ruck DeShaw, who is again at the GMC meeting. He apologized for not being able to be here. We both do share a birthday today, so we divided and conquered for you. So Coach Ruck said, "I've had the privilege of coaching in Highland Park for twenty-one years, and in my time, I've had the honor of coaching a handful of special players. I came about six or seven players over those twenty-one seasons who stand out and rise above the rest. Tonight, we honor Jahan for scoring the most goals in Highland Park girls' soccer history. I had heard all about Jahan's soccer story from Dad in the lunchroom through the years. He'd come for advice about where she should play and how, how, where he'd show me a cool play, a piece of film of a play she'd make in a tournament, and I was excited to finally see her in action. Was Dan just a proud Papa with daddy glasses, or was Jahan the real deal? When I learned that she looked up to Elizabeth Gervin and I was, and was trained by her, I realized she might be special. I won't bore you with my three-year absence, but let's fast forward to junior year when I coached her for the first time. She's the hardest-working player out there, she wants the ball always, she wants to score always, and yet, she'll lay it all out on the line for the betterment of the team. I love when she screeches to a teammate when she thinks she's open and she should have the ball. I think it's brilliant and hysterical at the same time. More so, she's just a leader. She leads by example with her voice, with her actions, and with her pursuit of greatness. It was such an honor to be on this journey with her for these two seasons, and I'll pray another player like Jahan comes along someday, but she's so rare that even this optimist is pessimistic. Congratulations, Jahan, love Coach Ruck.
Congratulations, the real deal. All right, well, thank you, Ms. McNally, thank you, Dr. Morello, for, for coming and for the staff, and congratulations again to all of our students being spotlighted. I encourage you to stay for the rest of the meeting. We're going to finish my report up with a presentation on our state test results, very riveting, musty TV, but I respect that you've all had long days, so if you need to excuse yourself, please do. And now I'd like to call up Ms. Michelle Rodriguez, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who will present tonight on our spring test results.
I try, Michelle, I try to get to the audience.
I cleared the room. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. So today, as Dr. Suska said, I'm going to share our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results. So we received score reports, right? And this shows us how our students are doing in terms of mastering grade-level student academic standards. I'd like to remind everybody that this is just one point of data in our students' educational journey, and that when we make decisions at the district level, we don't look at just the one data point. We look at lots of other measures in making decisions for the individual child in terms of support, but also in terms of instructional programming. Be nice if I turned it on. Okay. This is just a reminder of what the performance levels are. There are five of them in terms of the ELA and the math assessment, five being the highest, which is exceeding expectations, four met, three approaching, two partially met, and level one is did not meet. In order for a student to be considered proficient on the assessment, they have to have scored either a four or a five. This is our data for ELA. This is how we did at each level in comparison to how we did in 2024. So all of, if you look at the last column, those are the changes from twenty-four to twenty-five in the meeting or exceeding expectations columns. And all of the grade levels, where you see the yellow highlight, is where we showed growth from twenty-four to twenty-five. So we did that with grades three, four, six, seven, and eight. In terms of looking at, let me go back, grade five and grade nine, even though we saw a little bit of a decline from fourth grade to fifth grade, the cohort itself did grow. We did want to point that out. So if you look at all of the green squares, that shows growth in, within the cohort. So for example, if you look at level four for fourth grade at forty-four percent meeting, when they were third graders, it was twenty-eight percent meeting. So they went from twenty-eight percent as third graders to forty-four percent as fourth graders, which is a big jump. That's a lot of growth, so I wanted to make sure to, to highlight those things, because our students are growing. I know sometimes the data, when we just look at it like this, we've all loved to see higher scores, we know that. But we, the teachers and the staff have been working really hard, and I want it to, to be reflective that there is growth, and we are moving in the right direction. This is how we did in comparison to the state. So all of the yellow squares for level four, meeting expectations, we achieved above the state average, and in third grade, we missed it by only point seven. So we were very close. This is the subgroups. So for the subgroup category, this is all of the students that took the assessment for grades three through nine. So this is not by grade level, so this is how they did, so the colors represent the levels. And so you will see that the student performance levels are very varied by subgroup. This is where all my little mini numbers come into play, and I, in my papers. What happened? Sorry. Okay. So we do know by looking at this that we have some areas that we definitely have to target and dig into. So when we're looking at subgroups such as Black African-American students, students with IEPs, and our multilingual learners, those are three areas where we, we have to dig further into the data to look at what additional supports are needed. This chart shows it a little better. So this is how, same thing, subgroups, but this is how they did in relation to twenty-four, twenty-five in terms of meeting and exceeding expectations. If you look at the chart all the way to the right, it also shows our enrollment numbers for those groups. You will notice that in some cases, our enrollment numbers went up by a lot. So in some cases where we may see a little bit of a decrease in meeting or exceeding expectations, the enrollment actually went up. But in a lot of the cases, in terms of ELA, we did see growth. Shifting to math, this is a reminder, just in looking at the data, that when we're looking at grade eight, the data does not reflective of all of our eighth-grade students, because some of them did take the Algebra and Geometry Assessment. When we're looking at the Algebra I, II, and Geometry Assessment for high school, it only accounts for, it does not account for any student in eleventh and twelfth grade that took those assessments. When we're looking at this data, Algebra Geometry and Algebra II, they are reflective of both middle school and high school here. So again, looking at the yellow squares, we see, all the way on the right, we see where we have made gains from grade to grade, from twenty-four to twenty-five. The green shows where the cohort has shown, that's me, I'm sorry. The green is where the cohort has shown growth. So if we're looking at fourth grade for meeting expectations, in third grade, twenty-seven percent of the group met expectations, and when they were fourth graders, it was thirty-five percent. Here is the Algebra I and Geometry, broken up by middle school and high school, and in this case, I also added the number of students, because you can see that in some cases, we're talking about a small number of students. So our middle school students, we saw an increase from twenty-four to twenty-five in exceeding expectations. For high school, in Algebra I, we did see a decrease from twenty-four to twenty-five, but for Geometry, it's stable. We really didn't see much of an increase or a decrease. This is how we did in math in relation to the state. We achieved above expectations for level four for grade five and in Algebra II, and that takes into account both middle school and high school. This is our subgroup results for math. Again, we see a variation in our student performance. We do see a lot of yellow. The yellow are the students who are partially meeting, so they're very, I'm sorry, yeah, they are approaching, so they're very close to passing, but they're just not quite there yet. Meeting and exceeding, this is showing the subgroups from twenty-four to twenty-five school year. Again, the number of students for each of those grades is there on the right, because it's not necessarily exactly the same as in ELA. So we did see, with math, we actually saw, even though the increases are not large, we did see more of an increase in more of the subgroups than in ELA. Science, science is only taken in fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade. They do not keep the levels the same, so there are only four levels in, in science. Passing is considered level three and level four, proficient and advanced proficient. These are our results by level comparing twenty-four to twenty-five. In level four, we, we saw growth for eleventh grade. In how we did in relation to the state, we actually were above the state average for all of the grades for level four, advanced proficient, and for eleventh, eighth, and eleventh grade for proficient. So even the, even though here we may not have seen much growth in terms of twenty-four to twenty-five, we're actually doing pretty well in relation to how the rest of the state is doing. And this is the same like by subgroup. And this is how we are doing um by subgroup from twenty-four to twenty-five in terms of students uh proficient and advanced proficient. And I just wanted to point out why the enrollment is so important. So if we look at the subgroup two or more races, we noticed that in twenty-twenty-four, forty-eight percent of the population, of that student group was proficient, but in twenty-twenty-five, it was twenty-eight. When you look at the enrollment in twenty-four, we had that group was comprised of nineteen students. In twenty-five, it was comprised of twenty-nine students. The difference, even though it declined by one, it was only by, we only had one student. It was the only difference, but it looks like a huge drop, but it's because of the enrollment. And we see the same thing in students with five oh fours. We see a big drop there, but we actually had two additional students in that group pass. So these next slides just show what the, what I had in the highlighted charts. This just points it out. These are the, where the grade levels where we achieved above the state average for ELA math and science. Here is our cohort growth. So when we're looking at the same group of students, so our current fifth graders from third to fourth grade went up thirty percent in ELA, which I think is huge. Uh, our current sixth graders from fourth to fifth grade went up four percent. Our current eighth graders from sixth to seventh increased by eleven percent passing, and our current ninth graders from seventh to eighth grade increased by twenty percent. We would love to see that, obviously, like everybody else across the board. Um, and math, we did see some gains by cohort. Our current fifth graders went up four percent and our current eighth graders went up. It's small, but it's growth by one percent. I know, but math data across the state isn't great. So I think it's important that we highlight anywhere where we were able to make gains. We did make, these are the gains that we made for subgroups from twenty-four to twenty-five for each of the respected um subject areas. So our next steps, all families should have, if your child took NJSLA, you should have received the individual student reports. They were all sent home. If anyone didn't, they can contact the administration. We're going to continue to, like I mentioned earlier, we're going to use this data along with other measures that we have, that we um administer. Many of your children have um been completing benchmark assessments. We use all of that data to really hone in on what additional supports are needed, both individually by student as well as thinking about our instructional programming and the resources that we may need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Oh, no, no, no. Well, why don't you hold on, just in case I was going to open the floor up to see if there were any questions or comments for myself or Ms. Rodriguez.
I'll start if nobody else. Try to keep my voice a little bit lower. Um, I wanted to just thank you for breaking out the algebra and geometry data by middle school versus high school. Um, I think we asked about that last time and that was really helpful to see. Um, and also including the enrollment numbers, and you explained that really well, the way, you know, it may look like it dropped, but it's just because the numbers changed so drastically. You know, in some cases, just one student actually did better, even though it looked lower. So thank you. That's all.
Well, I would just add to that on the train of being thankful that I think this might be the first time that we had the subgroup growth uh percentages included. Right, okay, good. So yeah, thank you for doing that. I was actually noting that as a question I wanted to ask, and then you got to that slide. So wonderful. Um, but seriously, I do appreciate the effort at making sure that we also look at the subgroup growth or lack thereof, right, relative to um the larger cohort body. Um, and I'll just be curious to hear as we go along what, you know, what kind of um data make, decision-making you're making around the data um and supporting these groups.
I don't know if you can answer this question, but like you mentioned, you know, keeping this data in mind, uh, we're thinking about kinds of resources would be helpful. I'm just curious. I mean, if you could write a blank check of a modest amount, not like spend, oh. No, no, but I mean, um, you know, I, I asked Dr. Dr. Suska this question, version of this question, and you know, when we saw another set of numbers, I forget which ones exactly where things were. Oh, it was this part of stuff. And I said, you know, is, what has been happening? What have, what explains this? And Dr. Suska's answer was, it was a lot of little things we've been working on for a while sort of coming together, which you made, made a lot of sense. I'm wondering, for you, if, if you could spend the money on one or two big things, what would they be? Or would it be, or would you spread it around the stuff we're already doing? I'm curious where you would put that investment. If you have a sense of what resources would be the most help to get us to that even, do even better, especially considering some group differences.
That's a big question.
Yeah, I know.
And one I would really need to think about. Because it would depend on, I think, the content area. To be fully transparent, we've spent um, the last few years, we've really spent a lot of time around ELA. So if you ask me right now, do we need to buy any resource? No. I think we really need to spend time using the things that we have in our schools and paying um attention and using the data that we're collecting to make informed decisions in the classrooms in terms of instruction. If you're asking about math, I think we need a little bit more there, um, which we're working on this year, right? So we are um in the winter, planning to pilot a few programs. So that hopefully by September, we will have something in place in terms of math instruction. So I can't, I have a full answer.
That's a, that's a good answer.
Yeah, so I, I have a question and I'm, I'm hoping I word this correctly. But using the data with the subgroups, how do we take that data and focus on the subgroups who are struggling more than others? How, how would we use that to help those or support those groups?
So it becomes, so in terms of, and we've started this not necessarily so much with the NJSLA data, but in terms of looking at our benchmark assessments, we'll sit at grade levels. We'll look at them. We'll say, all right, who's on level, who's above level, who's right there, right? We use that data to make decisions on who's getting intervention. We use that data to say, okay, we have this group of students that's right below grade level, but they're right there. Well, what, what gap do they have? What are we missing? And trying to support the teacher and looking at what we can do within the classroom um to help support that. So it's very individual.
Okay. So that, that answered a question. Yeah, I was going to say it's, it sounds like it's very individual.
It is. So we look at the subgroup data. So in terms of trends, we're going to have to look at, it, it's about bigger numbers, right? When we're starting to look at the subgroups and those subgroups that didn't do as well as others, it's a smaller pocket of students. Um, so it varies widely by grade, by class. So I can't necessarily give you like a blanket.
No, you're explaining.
But I think it is, it is about spending more time looking at individual students. And we have students that do really well on the benchmark, and then we go look at their NJLS, SLA scores and like, they didn't pass. Or we had a lot of kids for NJGP that were one, two, three points away. And so we really do try to look at different measures to figure out how we can best support them.
Thank you.
I was gonna, um, along that kind of last comment you made, uh, do we have a sense that our benchmark uh assessments are actually being pretty predictive of the NJSLA so far? And you mentioned a couple of students who maybe didn't fit, like, is it helping us kind of predict who's in good shape?
So I wouldn't, for ELA, I would not say it's a correct, a, a direct correlation, right? Because our ELA benchmarks measure reading proficiency. But when you're talking about NJSLA, you're bringing a writing element to it. You're asking students to analyze and synthesize. You're asking them to do a lot more higher-order thinking than our benchmarks. Our benchmarks are asking, is the student, does the student have enough skills to do the required work of this grade level?
Yeah, it, I'm just curious if, yeah. I mean, it looks, it looks good in ELA, like, there's some huge jumps here. And I'd like to see those in math.
Yes.
Um, and I know we, we are piloting um curricula this year. Uh, I want to caution people to think that adopting a new curriculum is going to automatically raise test scores. Uh, I think the hope is that it kind of raises the floor. Um, but I think it's going to take the same kind of concerted effort like you've made in ELA around professional development, finding different supports, right, finding supports for intervention and that kind of thing. In math, I think the same way. And I think what's been really impressive, I think, around ELA is, is how cohesive and long-term it's been. And I think, I I think, given these and get, seeing the scores in, in past years, um, it's going to take that same kind of focus, I think, in, in math, and hopefully the curriculum is a part of that, right? But it's going to take um some support um in, in implementing that to change, I think, instruction significantly enough. I will say that particularly around middle school, everyone in the state is really struggling. In some ways, maintaining right now is pretty good. Um, even though we're, we're below the state average in, in some of, some spaces. Um, but that just seems to be a struggle, uh, not just in New Jersey, but nationally, um, at that.
But our subgroups are showing some growth in math.
Yes, but some are not. Which actually is, is the other piece. So I think, I, I understand looking at things individually, but I also think things need to be looked at systemically. So if we're not serving students, you know, black students in third and fourth and fifth grade, then it seems to kind of point to something systemically that we're not doing. And then, you know, looking inward to see like, what is it that, you know, we need to do to support students, you know, starting in kindergarten, right? So when they get into third grade and we start doing this testing, um, and the same, I mean, that, that looks pretty similar in ELA in math, I think, except for uh economically disavowed. It looks a little bit better in ELA than math. But I think that's something we have to really look hard at ourselves if, if we don't seem to be serving. Or looking at a grade that seems to be serving them differently than other grades and figuring out like, what is it they're doing, or finding a teacher who seems to be bucking the trend because um that's been a pretty persistent kind of issue. And I worry when I see that, that it becomes entrenched and that's the expected. And then people say, well, what can you do, right? Well, there are schools that serve them well, right? So then, you know, how do we serve multilingual learners better? Like, what do we need to do? What, how, you know? Thinking about differentiation, how do we differentiate instruction? Um, and, and I know we've, you know, been talking about that, but finding a model that we feel like really works and we have teacher buy-in and then do kind of very long-term kind of support that's um around something that we trust works.
Well, can I? I want to be back home. And to, and curriculum, um, just taking that mindset into that kind of, um, see like, you know, how much something, something to, to, that, you know. It's not a curriculum, it's good for all student combinations. Um, and like you said, we've chosen for, you know, show research that um populations like ours pay our seed looks across. Um, not just for certain subgroups, but um, you know, I'm excited to see kind of how we will look at how all the students are responding.
Well, you kind of just answered my question. I was going to ask about the pilot curriculum and if they, we do have researcher data showing their effectiveness with. Because to me, that's sort of where we really want to make sure we're concentrating as well. Um, so I'm happy to hear that. And just again, looking forward to uh hearing what sort of analyses you all come up with and recommend in terms of how we can move forward to better support all of our students. Um, and we'll be having those conversations in Equity and Excellence for sure and curriculum.
Um, Dan, you really uh covered both of the questions that I had, but I actually did have a larger question along because we are seeing this growth in ELA, which is wonderful. Um, and post-COVID, ELA scores were really the ones that tanked. Um, not just in this district, but across the country and across the state. And so we're not seeing that same growth in math, which is concerning because the only way that things turn around is when you're consistently seeing growth. Um, this also appears to not just be a Highland, Highland Park problem, but a statewide problem across the country, as Dan was saying. Do we have any sense of why? Like on a global scale, like is it post-COVID, everybody freaked out about the ELA test scores and invested heavily? And didn't in math? Or is there any sense of why this problem in math is persisting? Not, I mean, I'm not talking specifically Highland Park. Yeah.
Did math drop as much as ELA?
No.
Post-COVID, so we're not seeing the same growth because it wasn't as low, maybe?
Um, no, not really. It's a simple answer. I mean, I, I have some ideas, like coming out of COVID, it was really interesting to see young kids not have manipulatives. Uh, all of a sudden, teachers kind of reverted back and said, kids can't have manipulatives, or they can't behave with manipulatives. And it was it's been a challenge walking into schools to get teachers to pull those out. So if you think about, you know, twenty-twenty-one, kids not having kind of blocks to really kind of think concretely in math to then build that abstraction, that's really harmful. Uh, and then where those kids are at now, I mean, it's, it's possible that's an effect, but you know, that's more of my experience. Um, but I do know from talking to colleagues that that was a really big issue across different states. Um, so there was something about, you know, going online, then this hybrid instruction, and then coming back face to face. They didn't come back face to face in the same way they had been teaching. Um, and that has been a pretty rough transition back, but for those kids who didn't get that really concrete kind of instruction, uh, it hurts their abstraction. Um, and um, so it's possible that's a fact, but no, we don't really know. Yeah, so manipulatives are like, things like Unifix cubes, base ten blocks, uh, concrete materials that you would use to, to um, give a mathematical idea, very kind of uh, uh, losing my words. Textile kind of uh way of understanding a mathematical idea. And then eventually you can pull that uh away and they can hang on to the kind of abstract idea. But if you don't give them that concrete, then you're just asking them to rote-ly produce math, uh, and that is not very successful. Um, so yeah, especially if you want to get a number of learners forward, right? There are a few kids, usually not more than twenty-five percent, who if you don't give the concrete can still kind of move forward in math. They still don't have very good understanding. So if you ask them to do complex problems, it's hard to do. If you ask them to explain their thinking, you might get nothing. But um, yeah, so having those kind of very hands-on kind of materials early on makes a big difference.
I'll make one other, one other point, and then I know we have to move on. Um, my understanding, so I think these increases in scores certainly reflect increases in real ability and understanding. That's wonderful. Um, but I also think, uh, my understanding is last, last year in particular, there's a lot more practicing the test-taking than there ever had been before in the district. Um, and I think that, you, you know, probably played a role. And I think that's important to acknowledge that, you know, it's one thing to sort of understand something, it's another thing to be able to answer problems about it in a stressful, computerized environment. And I think that um, we want to keep giving, creating, setting aside time, even though it takes away from instruction. We want to keep, be setting aside time to practice taking the test. Because doing well in a test and getting a good score makes students feel good, makes the parents feel good, makes the district look good. Um, so I just hope we continue with that as well as improving our curriculum to get the understanding where it needs to be.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to the public comments. September's home. And I'm proud for you to be able to come up for a presentation and have this early time to talk. For the public members who go on six settings, that should be related by the public. Is there anybody, any person for public comment? You could go to the audience, just sign in and then you could just say your name and put it in.
I need to sit for this. Maybe I'm getting it open. Hi, can you hear me? Okay, my name is Michael Braylove. I live in nine South Adelaide Avenue. I've been a resident since over 55 plus years in Highland Park. And I'm here to talk about the Highland Park Educational Foundation. We, I guess the public's, most of you guys, the people on the board know what the education foundation is. But for the public's sake, they exist in about 50 towns in New Jersey. There are education foundations and rural nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations that support the local public schools in many different ways. But typically by giving grants to teachers for projects that otherwise couldn't be funded because the board doesn't have all the money that it would like to have. So the one in Highland Park is called the Highland Park Educational Foundation, which is not a distinct or memorable name, unfortunately. So if you do a survey of what, of people in town, of what that group is, you won't get more than 8% people responding positively. So getting the word out a little bit tonight, turns out we've been around for 27 years, 26 of them giving grants to teachers in the public schools. We've given out over $800,000 in different grants. And those were about 650 different projects that teachers wanted, that not just teachers, but were approved by the school system, by the board finally, as well as the principal of, of the school. So we had a wonderful, successful life until COVID. COVID stopped us from raising funds, but it didn't stop us from giving money away. And we didn't keep good track of our funds. So our bank account went from way up here at around $90,000 to close to $5,000. So the last couple of, we didn't do fundraisers for a number of years. We've been trying to make a comeback the last two or three years. And finally, in the spring, we were able to give grants again on a much more modest level than we had previously. Previously, each year we could give at least $30,000 away over the course of two terms in grants to teachers. In the fall, in the spring, I'm sorry. In the spring, we announced we would be able to fund about 10 grants at no more than $1,000 each. We did that and achieved that, gave that amount away and the board approved it, happy to say. Now we're just at the end of receiving grants. We, it's over and we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday night to look at those grants as a group, meaning I, myself and the other trustees and to say what looks good, what we can afford to fund. And then we'll come up with a decision, hopefully Wednesday night with the assistance of Dr. Suska and our board representative. And then be able to send out notices to the teachers and the principals and the staff that, yes, your project is funded or we have a question and get back to us with an answer if you can, et cetera. That's how we operate. So we've been very successful, but we're a small group of people. So I'm here, my, my basic plea is we need the public's help. We need a few more people who want to be active in a charitable organization in this community that has a wonderful history, that wants to continue and needs new blood to do so. I don't carry new blood. If, if the camera is any good here, you can see that very readily. Ah, I was made chair after 26 years, which tells you something. So we do, we have three core people who've been a long time. And we have a number of younger parents who are really dynamic and helping us tremendously. We need a few more people. We need somebody particularly who could be a treasurer and help carry the books, very modest books that we have and assist us with that. We need a few more people who want to put in the time and learn how to operate in a, this kind of charitable environment. And if you've never done it before, you can learn a lot and take these skills to help other groups as, as you spend your life being a useful citizen in this country. So I think I've covered everything here in my notes, but I'm going to look down and pause and make sure I didn't leave anything out that would keep me up late tonight. Yeah, so how do you get in touch? That's easy. Call Dr. Suska and she gives, she gives my phone number, email, anything away, just like that. You're a little interested, so please do so. I did bring, we don't have a lot of public here, but a few people. So I do have copies of our pamphlet handout that gives information and happy to give anybody here in the audience or anybody on the board who'd like to see it, who's not as familiar as they'd like to be with us. So we hope that we get the community's support. We've had it over the years, businesses, families, grandparents of students who are here, some of the teachers in the system and so on and so forth. We need to continue doing this to, to be vital and to help the schools with projects that really need help. We used to do, we, we could fund field trips readily in the past. We can't now. We don't have that kind of money. Nobody applied this time for a field trip because any bus, any place is over $1,000. Okay, now we, we cut our limit at $1,000. Somebody could have said, I can get 500 here. And then the Ed Foundation can give me, give me that thousand, but they didn't, they didn't submit that. So I, I advise them to do so the next cycle. In any case, I'm getting very specific and tangled in the weeds, so I'll stop now. If anyone on the board has questions for me, happy to try to answer. Nope, well, thanks, thanks for giving me the time.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello? Sounds good. Okay, hi. Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate it. Nice to be present in the room. I wrote this down. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for tonight. That was really incredible to watch. Mm-hmm. Will do. Hi, my name is Max Warren. I live in Highland Park, New Jersey. And I am reaching out tonight because I'm really curious, especially to the student representatives on the board, what your thinking is around safety in the school? The reason I'm thinking about this lately is because I am a school nurse, running for the Board of Ed in Highland Park, and I'm also a Stop the Bleed instructor. What you might not know about Stop the Bleed is that it's a program that goes around schools and really in the community and helps people respond to emergencies until help arrives. If programs like this were available, say in Newtown, Connecticut, many of those children who lost their lives could have just lost a limb. The reason I'm reaching out tonight is because, to my knowledge, Highland Park schools don't yet have this training in place. I don't know if they do. I'd love to offer my time to help make it happen because safety isn't about just preventing harm. It's going to be about actually dealing with it when it does happen. So I'm wondering for the student representatives here specifically, if the program's happening, do you know about it? Do you think about this? And does that get in the way of your tests? Does that get in the way of student achievement?
By program, do you mean like training for the students if someone were to say walk in carrying a firearm?
Yeah, and what happens if that does happen where someone?
Okay, and we'll follow up on questions later. In this case, I think what Dr. Suska can do is ask those students to kind of, you know, gather feedback from their peers.
Thank you.
To Dr. Suska.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'd like to know, is Stop the Bleed a training program currently available in Highland Park? Okay. If not, you have a community representative willing to, to teach it. Thank you.
Anybody else in person for public comment? Or too soon? And so how many folks did you have on Zoom?
Five.
Five? If anybody on Zoom has public comment, please raise your hand and angels, let me, let me. All right, thank you so much. If there's no answer, you can go ahead and move on to the public comment. There will be a lot of play on. All right, we're going to move on to all the board action items and we'll start with curriculum and instruction.
Curriculum instruction met on October 14th. We talked about the achievement data that everyone just saw presented on. I won't elaborate on that since we had a nice presentation discussion about it. The district is looking at piloting elementary math curricula. And those are being finalized. It's possible there will be three curricula, but, but we don't know that yet, but we look for that probably next month. We also talked about rigor perception feedback in elementary. And so there's preparation of a survey to go out to elementary students, staff and parents and guardians. That is being finalized, but it's really to understand the degree to which those different constituents kind of perceive the, the curriculum as being rigorous, how they think about rigor and to use this to further develop the curriculum kind of moving forward in, in elementary school. We want different folks to actually think of the curriculum as rigorous. And this is a step in getting that feedback from, from students, parents and staff. We also looked at academic integrity policy. It was small changes basically to note the AI policy that we now have and make sure that they reference each other. We also talked about bedbug policy, which we do not currently have. And was raised a few years ago. We did not adopt one and we are recommending bedbug policy and a regulation accordingly. That became an issue recently. We also talked about a revision of a family liaison job posting. This is title funding, funded position. And it's a combined posting to facilitate hiring someone and trying to maximize resources. We also talked about the Spanish class at the middle school. And we will be voting on someone to take that role on tonight. I know we got a couple of emails about that and there were some concerns. So we're excited, hoping we have a good teacher to fill that role. And other than that, we have a few items to vote on. We have approval of field trip requests and I have a read-in for that. Originally, the high school students were walking to Irving to read the, read to the littles tomorrow. But Irving needs to postpone. We've rescheduled for November 20th and it'll have the same timeframe. Other than that, field trips are exactly as they were sent out. We have the approval of one confirmed HIB report. Approval of the CUSAC district's performance report. Approval of submission of the school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. We have approval of home instruction for two students. Approval of revised job description for the family school liaison that I just mentioned. Approval of a number of university graduate students for teaching internships. And? Where'd I go? Oh, it was, okay. That's it. Any discussion?
I just had a question on that. I should, should know this, but I don't remember. On the CUSAC performance report, what, what equal, what makes us the 40% on instruction and program? That was a question for Dr. Suska.
Yeah, so the, the 60%, so each of them weighted out of 100%. The, we weigh ourselves on the first 40% of those indicators. The other 60%, if you look at the entire set, comes to us from the county after they get our NJSLA scores. So then they populate that. So if you remember last year, we were under the percentage of passing, if you remember last year. So we had to go on the district improvement plan and then we got out of that status because we had growth. So they moved us out of that status. So we don't know until they populate that portion of the spreadsheet for us. So we submit it and they fill out the 60% and then that'll be our total score.
That's what I forgot.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I had one question about the rigor surveys. I wondered if all the kids know what that word means before we send that survey out or if it would be helpful to include something in the top of the student survey, just to explain what that is. Or I was, I was looking like, is there another word to use? I couldn't find a better word, but at least if we could explain it to them before they take the survey. I thought that could be helpful.
Challenge would be a pretty, maybe a little bit more understandable word.
Good word.
Like, you know, yeah. But I think it's, I think it's a good point. And you think about second graders, third graders, taking this rigor might mean nothing.
Right. And then one other question about the survey wording, where they were all with the strongly agree, agree, you know, that format versus I thought possibly the kids would react better or respond better to sometimes, often, always, like that type of, those type of questions instead. I don't know, just an idea. I had an email written out to you that I haven't sent yet. Maybe I'll just send you the email, explain it a little bit more.
Yeah.
I kind of, I'm on, I'm on the same page.
It's more for the kid, the kids. Actually, I was going to do smiley faces, different levels of smiley faces, but I didn't know. Most likely it'll probably go out to fourth and fifth grade too. I'm not sure about second and third grade just because of the level of the questioning. Um, so our surveys usually start at, for elementary.
It's a reading assessment.
Fourth, fifth grade. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just got to say, I'm so pleased that we're doing this because, you know, as we want to talk about, about this and, you know, increased rigor in the schools, it's really important to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
Right.
So to actually hear back from students and staff and family members about their perceptions of what's happening.
Yes. What's, I mean. What does this mean to you? Is it more work? Is it more challenging? The questions I thought were great.
It's, yeah, it's really important and I'm so glad that we're doing it.
Yeah, so again, our end goal is to create a, a working definition that we all share as a common understanding of what it means that instruction is rigorous, that assessments, that instruction, that the resources, that everything is, is rigorous and what does that mean? So that we can use that as we are, you know, that everyone's on the same page with what it means versus, you know, just sort of a disconnect. So I, you know, when we did this work years ago with this sort of honors distinction, there was definitely a disconnect about what it meant to be honors or, you know, and going deeper into standards versus more of something. So it's really important.
Yeah, the other thing I just, I just looked up, rigor only is in the intro paragraph for the student. It's not in any of the questions.
Correct.
So it would be. So it would be a pretty easy.
Yeah.
Adjustment or we say rigor and parentheses, challenge or something else. And that's only where the pops in my head, but there could be other ways to say it.
Yep. Are we asking all of them to do it or is it going to be like parents? We can't make them do it. We're hoping that they do it, but are we kind of making students do it or just asking them? I think that's where.
Typically, it's at the elementary levels, the homeroom teachers will, you know, have, yeah, do it with the students and stuff like that. Yep.
I'm glad we're calling it a feedback form, not a survey.
Yes, yes.
Survey as we talk, but we're actually.
Yeah, it's actually called the feedback form.
Not a survey.
Survey. Feedback. And that's because that's actually what it is. I'm not surveying them for anything. Right. We're just, you know, it's just really a feedback form. Tell tell me what your thoughts are about, you know?
Yep. I want to reiterate like the definition. I think that is something that we definitely need to put on paper. So we really are all on the same page, including parents and students. I like the idea of sometimes, always, often, because I answer questions so much better than the the other way. And I'm just like, well, sometimes it's this, sometimes it's not. And like, what do I put? So I think it's just easier to answer.
Absolutely.
Yes, Equity and Excellence met on October, let me scroll up, October sixteenth. And our first item of discussion was our July policy alert, Policy twenty four twenty two, formerly called Health and Physical Education, now statutory curricular requirements. I think our discussion really centered around a question that came up around whether or not there is a legal requirement to withhold recess from a student if they violate the code of conduct or if a student has a HIB confirmed against them as an aggressor. Council did get back to Dr. Siska advising that there is no legal requirement. However, the district can revise the language of the policy to state that a student may have recessed, withhold in those situations or withheld in those situations. As a committee, we agree that we did not want to be in any situation where we we need to withhold recess from a student who's already present in the school. We discussed that some students may need to self regulate and reset during recess time, but we definitely want to be careful not to blur the lines there and think carefully about how we're defining what's developmentally appropriate around those behavioral resets. And just again, not making it part of our policy that we may withhold recess per se. So reviewing, we reviewed each school's code of conduct on the website. And noticed that none at that at that time had a direct call for the removal of that recess. We just want to make sure that that was not a practice that could be happening as a possible consequence, of course, for incidents, discipline incidents. However, Irving does include a statement about principal discretion. And middle school references lunch lunch detention as a possible consequence. Why that matters is because there is really no distinction between lunch and recess in the middle school. So I think we just talked about the need for really clarifying us, making a statement that clarifies recess time as separate from lunch. Since middle school technically doesn't have recess, they're essentially one period. And I know that's some kind of language that I think Dr. Siska talked about, making sure it's clarified with administration. We also agreed that we should include a statement in the policy, clearly stating that we do not withhold recess. And Dr. Siska is working on adjusting that language. We we already she already workshopped some of the language there. Saying that, for example, a student shall not be denied at recess for any reason, except as a consequence of of the violation, dot, dot, dot. That was the old language. And so the update would be although state law permits the not denial of recess up to twice per week for conduct related reasons, it is the policy of this district not to withhold recess for disciplinary reasons. So board members will see that language revision and will be looking at that and being ready to pass it. I believe we're just at the first reading of that of that policy. We also discussed the new student athlete code of conduct that arose around some recent incidents regarding student athletes or involving student athletes. And so I we thought it was a great idea anyway to have a policy or a code of conduct, I should say, particularly for athletes when they're in their game mode and representing Highland Park. The process of developing this code of conduct included multiple stakeholder input from student athletes and coaches. And per Dr. Suska's guidance, the code of conduct mirrors the restorative work at the high school. And the high school code of conduct in terms of the four levels of responses, it really mirrors what the students are already used to in that regard. And the new athletic code of conduct also aligns with NJ SA. Their could they have their own code of conduct and regulations with some minor differences. So that is also linked in the agenda for everyone. We talked about the proposed new bedbug policy and regulation on agenda and we all know why we are adding that now. But seriously, I think it's great that we did that. And this also led to a discussion around some revisions to our LICE policy, but the bedbug policy and regulation, nothing really controversial. They are there, it just really establishes, first of all, some general information on bedbugs, how to treat them, how to identify them, home and school communication around suspected bedbug infections. I don't know. Infestations, yes. Is it really infestation all the time? I don't know. We're still working on the language there. Communication with the Department of Health Services around pest control management and compliance with state reg. There's just a lot of detail in the policy and regulation, which I believe people will find helpful. Of note, when thinking about communication. Some policies excerpts I just pulled to to restate here that any staff member, first thinking about identifying them, any staff member who observes what may be bedbug bites on a student shall send the student to the school nurse. The school nurse shall examine the student to determine if there are any bedbugs present or bedbug bites. And this school nurse will then inform the principal and contact the student's parents on the results. Later on, the principal in consultation with the school nurse will determine if the parents of other students should be informed, if there is the presence of bedbugs has been identified in an area of the school where their children may have been or is during the school day. And this determination will be made on a case by case basis. Parents of other students, and I know this is a question that came up, parents of other students may not be informed if bedbugs are found on a student or in students possessions and are not found in the school building. So the idea is, again, if we don't see them or find them in the school building, it's contained to an individual student's possessions or body. Parents of other students may not be may not be informed. Then moving along to the LICE policy, sort of similar concerns around parental notification was really the key here. And so Dr. Suska already, I believe, went ahead and worked started working on a statement that parents around parent notification, that parents of students with head LICE staff and parents of the students in the classroom will be notified when LICE is confirmed. Let's see, moving on, we looked at the September discipline data, the incident report and the discipline report. And as always, we have a breakdown of the total incidents at each school and then the different subgroups involved in the different incidents. So just looking at the, you know, kind of overarching numbers at Bartle, the total number of disciplines incidents in September were was three. And the number of students involved in those three incidents were four. Middle school, there were thirteen total incidents and the number of students involved, twelve. And the high school total incidence, twenty five, total students involved, sixteen. Looking at the demographic groups involved, we still see the same sort of disparities in terms of the racial demographic groups and our students who are also on IAPs, being overrepresented in this data across the board. We noted, of course, that the, you know, larger number of incidents at the high school, middle school. And when we looked at this from the chart, many of those incidents had to do with sort of altercations, fights, interactions between the students. So it was just to get a time for us to really think of have a conversation around the supports for students in those areas and just continuing to develop that work and deepen that work. Then we went on to talk about nurtured heart. We got a nice update on the dreams team that's working on that program. Amy and Christian have been attending the nurtured heart sessions and they are the turnkey trainers who will get extensive week long training in December. The liaison liaison provides additional training and resources for supporting staff. And they will meet again in December to discuss goals for the year. So really excited to hear about that. And again, the turnkeying and just really seeing this approach become more comprehensive, I think, across all the classrooms. And the focus here, increased focus is on highlighting the successes of students. This is one thing that I know we've talked about, highlighting successes of students and staffs, of course, and parents and staff so far have been really receptive to the more positive highlights already. And then, as Dan just talked about from curriculum, we also touched on the rigor perception feedback forms. I don't need to go into any more there. Let me see, did we discuss anything different? No. Nothing new to highlight there. Oh, it looks like that is it. That's it. Any, it's been like two weeks, so I'm like that. Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah. Back when I was on Equity Excellence, the first couple, couple of years, we talked a lot about the RISE program. And I know that's something that was really a project of the committee that at that time. I was wondering if you have anything, if you could just, if you have anything to say about how that is going. And I know we've seen some reductions in discipline incidents and I was curious what your thoughts are.
Well, we have in our link to our discipline reports, we have the OSS and ISS data. So in school suspension has to be the term used in the system, but that really is our RISE program. This that gives you a sense of how many students are participating and, you know, getting the support from RISE and how many students are being out of school suspended. We haven't had a conversation in the past couple of meetings, getting into the details of what's going on with the RISE program. We do know that it's still functioning as it had been and based on the evaluation of the program. There is implementation of efforts to improve in those areas that have been identified. So I think we're probably, it's still early in the school year. So I think we should give it a couple more months before we really start thinking about, okay, what is the data telling us based on? Yeah, right. Right for us.
Dr. Suska, about getting an update.
We did. Exactly, yeah. I couldn't remember if we said what month, but we said we needed some time for that.
So I have assistant principals coming next month to their meeting to talk about just in terms of like what is happening within the program? What kind of restorative actions are being taken? What kind of it's really about wraparound supports as well. So it's the reparation of harm, but it's also wraparound supports for what could be needed, whether it's the intervention of our student assistance counselor, if it's issues around substance use and abuse. Is it, you know, referrals and work with our teen and, you know, or tween center regarding maybe some either mental health support or social emotional learning and because of conflict conflict resolution strategies. So there's a lot of wraparound supports. So I've invited the assistant principals and they're all very excited to share information about RISE and RISE Junior about their program. So more information coming soon.
And that's good. That'll be November, so there will have been some time for.
So that way, when you see the data, you'll see what is what is happening within that reflective of the data.
Yep.
So they'll they'll talk to the E and E committee. Can they also come and talk to the full board?
So if you want some just information about the general program, we can definitely invite them. The smaller group would probably talk more nuanced about like the details within there, but you know, in the in that kind of confidential situation, we're probably talking more granularly about the program and the data. But collectively as a whole, what we can do is, you know, Monique will share out notes from the meeting. And, you know, you can look through her notes about it. And then if there's particular things about the programming that you would like us to highlight, we can certainly do a presentation.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just gonna say.
Anybody can come next month.
Fair. Get your request now.
Don't all apply once. One seat.
Okay, Finance and Facilities met on October fourteenth. And it was Ann, Jen. Oh, it wasn't me. No, I remember. Why is that? I was I did not attend, however, I watched the recording and then did the notes. So it was Ann and Jen and Allison filled in for me on this one. And Dr. Suska, Mr. Rosen and John Flanagan. So on the so if I do something wrong, please, please step in before me. We reviewed the action items that we'll be talking about in a few minutes. The audit was completed at the end of September and that's why we have additional revised bill lists on this agenda. Additional reports to to include that information. We have on our agenda, the comprehensive maintenance plan, annual budget, that is, that's all required by state law and by Q Sac. It assures that we're spending the right, we're spending to maintain our facilities. We're required to do that and we have to report that out. On the the other agenda items, there's well, actually, I'll cover that when we get to agenda items. We we did review the facility, the current five projects that are facilities under the facilities items. And all those projects were included in the twenty five, twenty six budget and and or the tax levy incentive aid. So work is beginning on the camera systems and HVAC at Irving and a lot of door hardware replacements and so forth. So you see all that on the on the on the agenda. Also change orders, the Bartle structural repairs are still within the original budget budget, but there have been surprises along the way. So you see change orders on our agenda. We also covered the bedbug policy and we started the conversation about the LICE policy. I'm not going to go into it. You guys did a great job covering it. More to come on that. Well, the bedbug policy is on our agenda today to for first read. And we made some suggestions as well on the LICE policy in our conversations. And at that point, we talked about it being open for discussion at the next board meeting, but it sounds like it's going committee to committee and then will come back to us next month. They had the conversation about the champions before and after school program. And the flyer that they had been sending out, updating everybody on how things are go updating the board and how things are going in the oh, I did not mean to do that, in the after school program with total enrollment being up to that point, two hundred and eighty two students. And there was information there about staffing and so forth. And we also covered the other larger facilities projects. Let's see, maybe sit where I'm at here. Oh, the the field trip requests were in at that point for the twenty five, twenty six school year. And we were able to cover the the our share of that, which was totaling seventeen thousand dollars. Actually, that's money is coming from help, the money that we saved in health benefits when the association switched dental plans. We had a savings on that so that we're going to be able to cover all the field trip requests that came in for the school year. The audit was completed and there we still have the recommendations. We talked a little bit about student lunch balance, which is the ongoing balance that we carry, even though the district is doing all we can to both have families pay what they owe and also apply for free and reduce lunch so that that doesn't continue to increase. Baseball fields in the final stages of completion, they were reseating it this weekend. John is looking at getting water. We have a small property that that will hopefully help us get us to water the sod that's on the baseball field. Bartle bathroom demolition was done, new floors being four, things are moving along November, December completion date for the bathrooms, for the structural repair. They're still hoping to get it done in by December or in December. Designs are in are being completed for the new pre K classroom. Bid should be going out by the end of October for that. The last piece that is actually up for discussion, I could bring up for discussion here is the greenhouse. John and Denise have worked and worked to try to get that in, get something going for that within the budgeted amount that we were given through the Kushner grant. And what they have right now is the closest they've come to the budgeted amount. So that what the the current proposal, I guess, would cost two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars, but not including a lot of things like greenhouse supplies and the cost for attaching the utilities and insurance and so forth. So we could potentially, at this point, build the greenhouse, but then not have it usable because we need to come up with those additional funds, raise them, raise them in the future or, you know, so we're now at the point, do we build the structure and not use it until we get the additional funds to finish it? Or make it usable? Or do we return the money? And so I don't know, Denise, if you've had time to reach out to the donor, that was one of the next steps. Do you is it okay to to open that or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead.
We actually met with them today.
Oh, okay.
And after our meeting, we did finally get the quote from the contractor to connect utilities. And the quote is one hundred and twenty one thousand nine hundred dollars. And the quote is one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. But, uh, meeting with the donor was, I think, especially helpful. We had a conversation, uh, with the attorney that was in charge of the estate. Um, and they indicated, uh, that if we were to write a letter, uh, indicating all the obstacles that we faced, you know, getting through the grant and propose a different idea, uh, that they would be willing to entertain that. So, uh, Dr. Seska set up a meeting with the stakeholders at the high school to develop some other ideas, uh, STEM related, maybe not STEM related. We're just going to try to brainstorm something that we can actually complete within budget, um, and get all the quotes ahead of time before we write the letter to the foundation.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, a lot of time went by and everything became extraordinarily more expensive, uh, than originally planned. So, um, you know, what we don't want to do is build the structure. And then the issue is if you don't have, um, electricity or utilities out there, it really is only usable for a very short window of time. And our employees are ten-month employees, so, you know, they could prepare to grow something theoretically in the spring, but no one is going to necessarily sustain it over the summer. So how do we, um, how do we build something that can be used maybe ten months of the year, which was sort of the plan? But, you know, it seems extraordinarily expensive, um, way more than we actually thought. We were thinking north of fifty thousand dollars. And when we got the price today, it was a shock to see that it was way north of the fifty thousand, uh, that we had estimated. So, um, but, you know, when we talked to the attorney, it was really helpful that, um, instead of just using the money, instead of returning the money, that we could potentially use it for another, maybe high school science-related or STEM-related project. So we're brainstorming some ideas, um, that really can be utilized, uh, for a big chunk of the students that, you know, I'm all students if it takes some form of science, um, you know, maybe biology or something like that, that can impact the majority of the students or all students at the high school. So we'll meet Friday to really brainstorm a couple of ideas and we'll circle back to everyone, um, when we have some.
Great, thank you. Yeah. Good, that answers that question. Okay, now going to go on to the agenda, which, uh, the finance facility action items, which is very lengthy, but see if we got it through here. So there are, as I mentioned, a lot of additional, uh, bill lists and treasurer's reports, uh, board secretary's reports, because we went back to, because of the audit that was done and, and the updating of all the information. So that's really, um, items one through six, seven are the typical reports and additional ones, um, covering, July. Some of them coming, covering as of, uh, July and then all the way through the end of October, um, on our board event certifications. There's, uh, budget transfers, travel and related expenses. Contractors for, uh, professional related services, uh, CPR training, uh, just kind of skimming down, there are developmental, uh, specialists, some additional people we can call on when those, um, reports are needed. Wellsprings to, uh, do some presentations on vaping for eighth and ninth graders. Continuing the work with EDFI. And then for professional development, we have again generally consulting, um, to work on, um, what's work that they've been doing. That's tier one instruction, sorry, tier one instruction particularly. IXL, uh, uh, training the administrators for that. Some presentations on artificial intelligence for our staff. We have a, um, a request to approve and add a district tuition for an Edison student. I, to, uh, for a student here to attend school in Edison. We have two, uh, McKenney Vento, uh, contracts on our agenda and some, uh, number fourteen is bedside instruction and there's a small change on C under number fourteen. That should say October third, twenty twenty-five, um, as the effective date for student C. Um, and then we have what I mentioned, that comprehensive maintenance plan and budget that we're required to submit to the state. There's a, uh, preschool operational plan submission, which would be similar to what we're doing now. Number seventeen, the projected enrollment for pre-K, um, will go in at an additional fifteen students. So we have ninety currently now projected each year. And because of the pre-K classroom that we're going to be adding at Irving, we will be able to increase it to a hundred and five students. We don't yet have those reports, but they are going to need to be sent out before we meet again. So that's why we're, that's why that's on our agenda now. Upgrades to the security system, uh, that is, uh, the, the camera, come, camera integrations and installations at the middle school, high school. Number nineteen is the non-public school transportation costs, um, the reimbursement for those costs. The, uh, reserves, reserve balances for non-public school transportation. Acceptance of the extraordinary special ed aid that was in the amount of one million sixty-four thousand and seven dollars. Um, and then, um, a transfer of sixty-four thousand of that into, um, our unreserved fund balance that we're allowed to do. It's an improvement of an agreement with NDK Realty. The heat pump replacement at Irving is on our agenda as well as the hard, new hardware on the doors at Irving and Bartle. Some of this is through the tax levy, um, that we were able to do to cover some important work that we need to doing. Door alarms at Bartle, um, and also a, oh, the heat pumps at Irving is number twenty-seven. Twenty-eight is a pass through for, um, the children's house monastery for cameras. And twenty-nine is an addendum, um, with the SS, which is the, uh, the organization that gets our substitutes. And I, I noticed that one was, uh, if we needed substitutes for secretaries, there was an addendum on the cost for that. And, uh, that's the agenda items for finance facilities. Are there any questions?
Sorry, before you have a question, if I could just, uh, letter, uh, number ten, letter C and D, the end date should read June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I wrote it on here and didn't, so C, those are the neuropsychology, uh, consultations. It was a tape though, right?
Thank you, sorry.
Um, I had a question, I think, for Christina. I'm not sure about the, or Denise, the reimbursement of the non-public school transportation costs. Do we get all of that back from the state? Everything we put out?
That is the portion that is returned back to us. Yes, yearly, we, we report to the state the cost of non-public transportation and the state funds a portion of that and we reappropriate it to our current budget. So we recognize the revenue and from last year and then reappropriate to this year's transportation budget.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head, like how much of that we're getting back? Is that half of it? Is it?
I don't.
Five percent? Okay.
I believe it also includes Aiden Lou and our Aiden Lou, uh, payments are over, exceed a hundred thousand dollars easily.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'll move on. Personnel. So agenda item one, personnel is approved at this moment. Number two is approval for, for the expenses. Number three is the approval of resignations. Jimmy first from Irving. Miss Ali, who was supposed to do middle school soccer, that started, uh, Sam Perez. We are, there's sad to see though, the sheet does the luck and Lauren Smith. The approval of appointments, uh, there are a lot here, so I'm going to kind of, I guess, somebody should do that. So Barack Mayne is going to talk here as middle school soccer coach. Andrew Mararo is going to volunteer as the wrestling coach at middle school. Matthew Rosso is going to, uh, volunteer as the girls' basketball coach for high school. Daniel Pete for girls' basketball. Brad Jordan for kettle, kettle for basketball, girls at the high school. Uh, and then going to move to, uh, Anna Rose Gable. I'm going to, yes, I'll take you in and follow. Sidler Shavier, uh, professional at Irving, their choralists, full psychologist, Lucy Paris, special education teacher at high school. Heidi Goman. Domie, Hector Domie is going to be the Spanish teacher at the middle school. Stephanie Hofler, who's going to be the, uh, interventionist at Irving for now. And then speech, uh, speech therapist is, um, hit my perfect. Um, we had also some appointments for different coaches as listed, um, from Logan U. Or not to purchase, um, it's technical, it's handy. Tracy Dowdge is going to be filling in as an administrative secretary to the school. We have some boiling segments. We have team treatment meetings, so staff wants to be, uh, meetings, some staff for brothers mentoring at Laurel. Staff for the VAC public night and also your family engagement nights. Domie. Thank you very much. Uh, academic advisors in the middle school. Again, my final specialist at the middle school as well. Uh, we have some translators for our VAC mates. And we have a freshman advisor in Spaxton. Ms. Carter is going to do the wise connection advisory at the middle school. And, uh, we have some teacher leaders. So, Ms. Daphne is quite monitoring, that's me. Co-parents are going to continue with the, uh, family liaison, just applying. We have the, some staff for the bilingual parents advisory committee. Number five is the approval of two transfers, staff. Number six is the approval for, um, handholding care training for staff. So you're going to engage in that training. Number seven is approval for professional development mentors and as a chief, as listed. Some, um, information on document assessments, learning outdoors, power hour. Digital Zen. Find yourself a piece in your Google try and you know, I need that.
Yeah, me too.
Can I join that one?
Teaching practices, spiraling curriculum. There's a bunch here, so, so many things to our staff members to, and provide those confused to them. PTA, I mean, PTA. Um, there's also going to be, for number eight, two independent study supervisors. And then for number nine is the approval of administrator training. And these, uh, administrators will be, is going to be training for IXL. And that is it. A lot of personnel appointments today, um, just because we didn't say your name doesn't mean we don't wish to allow you to appreciate it. We've all, the whole staff, thank you so much for joining us. Policies and regs, so have, uh, four policies, two policies, oh my goodness. Three policies, one regulation, um, the acceptable use of generated AI, academic integrity, and then the bedbug policy and corresponding bedbugs regulation. We also have policies that can be used for secondary meeting. Those are consistent with choice, student sun protection, special education can then be issued in a setting program. And that's it for policy. Yeah, that was, yes, not as much as financing facilities, though.
Thanks very much. I'm glad to win that one.
So we're going to move on to our second public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved time for comments. Anybody, any persons for public comment? Uh, until how many do we have on Zoom? Or if any of you on Zoom would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. All right, and with no hands raised, we are going to close a bunch of, of other comments. We will start now with our board of education spoke.
I move items one through seven.
Second. Dr. Beatty.
Uh, abstain from seven and yes for everything else.
Ms. Cassel Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
Finally, what's the names?
I move items one through twenty-nine with those read in, uh, just those changes. On number ten, where it was, uh, C and D should say twenty twenty-six. And number fourteen, uh, letter C should be twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
Hi, for personnel, I'd like to move numbers one through many.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
All right, get ready for this. I'm abstaining from four H, four EE, four VB, and four JJJ. And yes, everything else.
Sorry. Uh, Ms. Cassel Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
Oh, that's me, the policy. All right, for policy, I'd like to move numbers one to.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes, to all.
Ms. Cassel Dunn. Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
Um, board leadership reports, I mean, board leadership reports, those reports.
Are you gonna, I don't know where it goes, were you gonna, uh, mention about having gone to the school boards, the school board associations meeting? Yeah, we did. We had a few meetings this morning. Maybe he was in person.
And JDSA. Um, yes, we did it.
While I was, uh, doing my dishes and watching the, uh, the meeting. I did, I'd actually just found interesting, the meeting was about cell phone policy, a big piece, it was about cell phone policy. And my, my takeaway was that there were a lot of districts there that were scared to even, even attempt it or didn't know how to attempt it. There was a lawyer speaking from, um, from Bush's office and another lawyer, I don't know from where, trying to give advice as how to go about doing cell phone policy. And I was thinking, wow, we're like so far ahead of that curve. And so I felt pretty good about our district having, you know, the process that we followed, um, worked so, has, seems to have worked so well. And so that was my takeaway from that meeting.
Yeah, I had similar feedback, like we were kind of, um, you know, at a game in terms of where other school districts are now, so, um, kudos to us, you know? And I think a lot of the things that they suggested, we did put into place, so it's just a matter of monitoring how everything's going.
And I feel like they're going to start implementing after, you know, explaining how great things have gone here.
I think it was helpful that we didn't rush it in. It took time to really figure it out.
Did, did, uh, did the governor ever do anything about the statewide policy about self? Okay, I'll hold that for a little business, holding it.
Um, so, current support, I have a question for. So every year, the board does a self-assessment, um, in which they make themselves against, um, best practices and standards for school boards. This year's, um, self-assessment was updated, so it's a little bit different and language is a little bit different. Um, and so based on that assessment, um, at our last meeting during executive session, we discussed goals. Um, and so we have now two new goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. One of them is accountability, accountability of, for student achievement. And that leads, the Highland Park Board of Education will support the Pathways to Excellence twenty-five to twenty-six strategic plan by working in collaboration with district leadership to systematically review and enhance the district's action plans developed to support our strategic goals, ensuring alignment with our district's vision, mission and objectives. And that states the board will review policies and, or new recommended policies, um, such as attendance, academic integrity, use of AI. And that states the board will review policies or new recommended policies such as attendance, academic integrity, use of AI. And make necessary revisions based on that current research and data. And recommendations to improve positive academic, social and emotional outcomes. We will approve curriculum updates and or professionally available plans that provide essential learning tools, technology and rigorous curricula. There's that word again. Expand equitable access to challenging coursework. Create inclusive, culturally responsive and identity confirming environments and include evidence-based and measurable strategies towards racial, ethnic and socio-economic disparities. We will analyze district academic. District academic attendance and climate data several times per year to evaluate the code those current strategies. And meet with the mayor's office several times during the twenty five, twenty six school year. To exchange information on district facilities, documenting those outcomes and. And then the second one, I'm sorry, can I read in a small change? It should say communication of mission, vision and goals. Thank you, Ethan, for that. Because the mission, vision and goals. You know, like as a dog in terms of our self-assessment is more broad, but the goal that we created is what we about. So we're just going to read it. It's just a communication of mission, vision and goals. Um, how the park board of education will strengthen communication efforts to ensure the vision, mission and goals are clearly articulated. To all district stakeholders and progress updates are communicated. So the board would publish our monthly public update through the district website, email list and social media summarizing board actions and upcoming opportunities for community input. Highlight staff and student achievements and several public communications, newsletters, social media, board meeting recognitions during the school year. Share updates on district challenges and progress at every regular board meeting. And we should increase family participation in surveys, focus groups and advisory groups with targeted outreach to historically. And those are all. I'd like to move the approval for the twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six kind part of education goals.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Yeah.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes.
And I would just like to say thank you, Allison, for staying on some of our cases who's needed to kind of get feedback in a timely manner around these goals. This is kind of a need. We have, this happens, so we appreciate you doing that. I do anyway, so.
Second, second.
Yes.
Right.
All right, old business.
Well, what about the governor?
No, the legislature's been out of session for months. I'll come back next week and I'll keep you updated.
It's on our own.
I I do have something for old business. So back in August, the board approved the water grant to be submitted. That due date back in August was August thirty first. The state has extended that deadline to November fifteenth. And during that time, October twenty first, we were notified by the borough. By Middlesex Water Authority that one of our water lines, service lines is made out of galvanized steel. Which has to be replaced by twenty thirty one. So John Flanagan and I are working. Very hard to submit a revised grant to the state by that November fifteenth, which actually is the thirteenth deadline. So I just want to inform the board.
I had a quick thing about the lice policy that I forgot to bring up earlier. We had mentioned giving out lice kits, like the nurse could give out lice kits to families that maybe might not be able to. Get that on their own. And I did happen to speak to one of the nurses who said that they don't have any. We were, we had questioned, oh, I I hope they're not expired. You know, we haven't talked about it in a while. But she didn't know anything about the lice kits and said they didn't have any, so I just wondered if we could reach out to the other nurses and. I don't know if we could supply some or if you need.
Yeah, the nurses met around these policies, especially the regulations, because that's the way that they operate around around these. And a great discussion was had that Dr. Mortler led with the team and essentially. From their perspective, they don't want to associate themselves with particular kits because if the chemicals in there do anything, there's like a liability component. On the district in terms of like what kits we're putting out, what if they're expired, what if they're used after an expiration or anything like that? So what they do is they give packets of information and then tell you where you can get kits, what they would recommend as kits. But as practice as part of like their licensure, they don't give out kits. So that was shared in this meeting and the entire medical team there, we're all in agreement on that. So I think some of the new nurses in the community that joined our community didn't weren't aware of that. So some of our nurses that. You know, have been in the district for a little while, kind of shared that information on this is the practice that we give. And so then they were all in agreement that they would follow that practice and understood the sort of liability of giving out kits that. They don't necessarily know of the ingredients that are being put out there and associating themselves with up. Because there's, I guess, many different kits, apparently, according to some of our nurses, that there's different kits. So it's not like just one type of kit to take care of lice. There's. Many different treatment options that are also included home remedy options and things like that. So that their best bet was just to that they could give out literature on it. But not the kits themselves.
Do we know if any other schools are doing this? Like, we used to do it.
Right, so no, no schools are doing it now for that reason, because the liability is too great.
Okay.
Um, following up on that, having been through this a number of times. What about like knit combs, though? Because there's no chemicals in that. They can be expensive. Sometimes you have to, and it's not necessary. I I found that the pantene method was the the most successful.
There you go.
Instead of the chemical ones and a knit comb was absolutely key to being able to do that. So like.
I'll ask them about that.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I'll ask them about the knit comb.
And you can ask, do you have one?
Yeah.
And if they don't.
Right, shampoo and a comb kit. I can ask them about that. I can ask them about the the comb. I'm not gonna have them give out shampoo or conditioner, but I will ask them if they can give out knit combs.
Yeah.
Knit combs. Yeah, I'll ask them about that.
And I did want to find out now that we don't have Rite Aid where families can go in town to get this stuff if they wanted to. Especially if they have to walk. So I don't know if Super Fresh carries it, and I'm not asking you guys to do that, but any of us, next time you're in Super Fresh, maybe take a look and see if they have. Lice kits, knit comb. Or Unite.
With a new health.
The new pharmacy opening up.
Caraza.
Is it open already? Okay.
But that could be added to the information.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Find that information out.
Yep.
Thank you.
I actually, I had a question about cell phone policy. Would that be?
Definitely old business.
Business. So. You know, we had a report from the middle school principal, Ms. Brady, about the in the first couple of weeks, the decrease in bathroom passes. And I was wondering if, I mean, obviously, it's too soon right now, but could we do a mid-year report? On whether there has been a decrease in. Disciplinary actions or like whether it's been the same, just kind of look at have there been changes? In the school environment measurable, right? So the smart passes for the bathroom could be one. Disciplinary issues. It would just be nice to kind of have a mid-year update on how this is going.
Yep, so our central leadership team met for their first time for their four meetings for the year, and we talked about tracking that data. So we're still reviewing the attendance data. The data around the the cell phone policy and things like that. So at the next meeting, the each group's, each building staff will bring. The school leadership team will bring that data to the central leadership team to review and we can report out on it.
For the high school and the middle school.
For all four buildings, even though Irving doesn't really have it, but they're, we don't want to exclude them because they're part of. Well, but in attendance too. So what they do is they go around and we start our central leadership team meetings with. A review of the each building, school leadership team and what they're talking about, and then they have to bring data on those points to share with the with the committee that we that we talk and problem solve around.
But I was at central leadership team and the initial reports are very positive.
Yes.
Right, not, there's not, it's not the data yet, which I would think is also.
Was anecdotal qualitative.
Anecdotal qualitative, that felt like it was a pretty smooth transition and they were seeing positive results. So that's certainly in the middle school continued to say that.
Yeah, and thank you to the high school parent email and saying, my kid was texting me and I think they're supposed to be in class. I was like, oh, that's good. So we targeted what class that was and that we reinforced.
They routed out the.
Yes, and so we we reinforced with that particular teacher, the need to use the little, you know. How do you hold holders? And so now we can hold the staff accountable to make sure everyone's doing that. So thank you to parents. For telling us when their children are texting them during class. We appreciate it. Keep the good vibes coming with that. But I haven't had any since then, which means we're we're in a good, good place. So beware, students, when you text and call your parents. They are gonna rat you out.
That parent might get the silent treatment at home.
It's in very few, but. But we appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Lommy and I had a question about the NJ SLA scores. Particularly something about what Dr. Beatty was saying about taking a more systemic approach to bridging the gaps between the performance levels and the subgroups. And we were basically wondering if. That enrollment in AP and honors classes would factor into any kinds of these decisions because based on our own experiences, Lommy and I observed that. The percentages of white, Hispanic, Asian and Latino kids was sort of consistent with the percentages we were seeing on the presentation.
I mean, I I think in a, I I think this is what you're getting at. I think those results are feeding into like AP courses, right? So the fact that they're achieving lower third, fourth, fifth grade, middle school means they don't have access to AP. And so I think you all are seeing it at that level, but it's clearly starting much earlier, right? Is that kind of what you're saying and thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've been trying to do a lot of problem solving around that. That includes. Breaking down the barriers for access to those classes. So in way in the past, there used to be like a teacher recommendation or a certain grade. And things like that, that you had to maybe hit to even have access to those classes. So we've been breaking down those barriers. So if a student wants and is in, wants to participate in one of these classes, there's no barrier to do that. So it's not like that they have to have. For certain things, there are some prerequisites that are required, you know, maybe for some AP classes, but other than that, especially at an honors level or even AP. You know, we have freshmen taking AP Bio and we want to encourage that as long as they understand that, you know, that it's. It's a college level class and it's going to be a lot. It moves really quickly as opposed to the other classes. So it's just about a conversation. So we've been breaking down those barriers. Instead, we've been trying to give the students, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, if you remember that survey, it's like an inventory of the things that you like and things that you don't like. So we're trying to use that with the school counselors. To encourage students to participate in and try out those classes with the support of peer mentors, teacher mentors. Additional ways to get tutoring or extra help if needed. So we're trying to encourage more of that and breaking down all the barriers. So right now there really aren't any barriers other than maybe a couple of small classes that do have a couple prerequisites. But it's not that you have to have a grade in a class, but that maybe you have taken. Another class prior to that. And most of those are really governed by the AP level. Other than that, there are no prerequisites. There are no requirements. It's, you know, we want students to feel comfortable and excited. To pursue something that they're interested in in a in a higher level, but but a lot of times it could be confidence, right? If they don't see themselves as a learner in that area, in that space, because of maybe some, you know, lack of. Of instructional components throughout their career. So math, if they don't have a strong number sense, they might not feel empowered to take it. So we want to, that's why we're really focusing, if you, you know, see things like math intervention at the at the primary school and ways to combat that. So people feel that they can be successful in any of those classes that they take.
I actually want to piggyback on that question, like conversely. Would the AP honors students now? Kind of skew the numbers a little bit because there's a standardized test and if they're doing more advanced work, would it not look like? You know, the students who aren't doing those classes would not score as high as the students who are doing those classes.
I mean, I. I mean, I guess so. I mean, I see you like, like if we parse out the data and say of the eleventh graders that took the like ELA or the ninth graders that took ELA. Nine, how many of them were honors students versus college prep?
AP ELA is going to be able to do a lot more than somebody who's not an AP because they're getting more advanced work.
Or honors, I mean.
Yeah, and I would just be curious what the demographic is compared to that.
Yeah, theoretically, I mean, the test isn't, you know, this isn't designated for the AP or honors level. You know, are students more successful at taking the test because of that access? I'm not sure. We don't really parse out the data that granularly by student at at. At this level, but certainly when the teachers get their score reports and looking at it, that's definitely something that, you know, we can bring back to Ms. Rodriguez to talk about in terms of like. You know, at the high school level, what kind of work do they do around the data?
Sorry, we also had a question about the rigor survey that was mentioned. We're wondering if, so wait, just to make sure, this is only for elementary students?
Yes, so we're eventually, we want to expand it, but right now just starting with elementary first to get that foundation.
Yeah, no, I, we were thinking like that same thing about expanding it to high school students because there are like, we mentioned that there are differences in like classes and we want to make sure that it's consistent. The standards across the classes are consistent, so.
Yeah, I love that. We did that many years ago when we were working on the honors distinction for ELA eleven and US history two. We actually had focus groups and. Got input and feedback from parents, staff and students and actually found collectively in all three of those stakeholder groups. The idea of rigor meant more of something, more work, more reading. More homework, which was really consistent amongst all three stakeholder groups, which was very interesting, especially for teachers to understand that, you know. Really, the reality of what rigor should be is deeper into something. What does it mean to go deeper into something? And that really is what, when you get to the high school level, what really an honors or a higher level class should be is how do you go deeper in there? And so what we did in that, those two grade spans. Was develop rubrics, and I only know just because I was intimately involved in my previous role, in helping that group to develop rigor, excuse me, rubrics around. Key skills like analyzing, you know, evidence, constructing arguments. You know, that kind of work around those key skills that are in actually every curriculum. And then what does it mean to meet the standard for that skill, like construct an argument for something, right? So what does it mean to meet the standard of constructing an argument? And then what does it mean to go deeper into that? So if it means using primary evidence, but maybe going deeper is students finding their own primary sources versus being given primary sources or something like that. So it has been work that we've done, and I know in the past we've been talking about expanding that sort of mindset around honors distinction to provide more access. So hopefully in the in the coming years, more work will come with that.
Oh, yeah.
Great questions.
Wondering about Ms. Paxton becoming the new advisor for the freshmen.
Yes.
We were just wondering how that would work since she would be taking on two advisor roles for the senior class and the freshman class.
So that would be a great question I could ask Dr. Donovan and get back to you, or if you don't mind bringing that question to her her attention. I know that they're usually, my experience when I had done a role similarly in my school was that usually their. Events are different, right? They run different events and different fundraising at different times. You might want to ask Ms. Donovan, Dr. Donovan, I'm not even sure how many people applied. So if if nobody else applied and Ms. Paxton volunteered. We'd love to have an advisor over no advisor. Again, I'm not sure if that's the case, but we might want to talk to Dr. Donovan and just get an idea of, you know, if there were any applicants at all. And then how Ms. Paxton will be able to balance her time. But Ms. Paxton's like a superstar, so I'm sure she'll be just great at it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Last thing, is this when we like respond to the public comment or?
So we typically, we typically don't. So what I'll do is I'll email you both and just say, here's a bunch of questions. And then just respond to me and then I'll make sure it gets back to to the to the person directly asking the question.
And can I just add one, another response to your initial question about the student differences you're noticing in the classrooms? It reminds me of back in twenty twenty one, I had to pull up the email just to get the year. It's been that many years. There were student group presentations to Equity and Excellence and then to the broader public around research that students did in Dr. Gold's. Race and gender class around this very same issue that you all raised. And so if you'd like to see the actual PowerPoint presentations the students share because it was really insightful. They had some qualitative like question. question and answer, um, information from students, from the student body about what they're perceiving and what they're noticing, um, and how they also attributed to their early experiences and really in Bardo, like how they saw the, the differentiation starting at a young age in the reading groups, right? Who are in certain reading group levels, right, based on their demographic status. And so they also talked about, um, what they noticed in terms of like self-segregation too, among some of the student groups that you're noticing are not represented, um, proportionately in those AP and honors classes, so it was just really interesting to hear the student perspective. And it's just telling to say that we're still here, struggling with this same issue, and we, the dial really hasn't moved a whole lot. And it doesn't reflect that there hasn't been effort and initiative around, work around it. It's just, um, it's, it's just a very complex, deep-rooted, um, issue that certainly isn't something we experience exclusively. Um, but I'm glad that you raised it, because we always have to keep this really central to what we do here at Highland Park. And it, as you, you as students, see that affects you too, right, because you see the differences in your classroom, and we don't want that, we sure don't, we don't. So I'll be sure to share that with you in case you're interested in hearing some of your.
Can you share that with me too? That was a little.
Yeah. That was, that was so.
Yeah.
Uh, something. Um, so back to school night for the parents at the middle school was, uh, great. Um, I really enjoyed hearing from Dr. Robinson and Ms. Brady and meeting all the teachers, awesome. The only truly unsettling thing about that night was the bell. Oh, my lord, uh, the buzzer in between class period. And I know it seems like a little thing, but I was just imagining if I was a student bracing myself at the end of class every time for that sound. Is there anything we can do about it?
Change it to a chime.
A chime?
Let me just tell you this, both schools have some sort of bell system to let them know, right, which is different from elementary. You have a bell rings and you move to your class. Um, I will say the system that we use for the middle school bell system is incredibly antiquated.
It's not a bell, it's a, it's a buzzer.
Buzzers, the system itself and where it happens is a very antiquated system, I'm not gonna get into the weeds on this, other than it runs on a laptop in the main office. On a very particular laptop, because it's a very particular software that's very old, and you have to pick up a phone, hang up a phone, it, it, it's a process, and then changing is a whole mother situation. We could definitely upgrade, depending on where you would like to spend your money next year. We could talk about that, maybe in finance and facilities, get some prices on how to upgrade systems to make it a more friendly sound.
Some chime.
Some chime, you know, or something like that, we could do it, you know, it's like a doorbell where you can maybe change it depending on the season or something like that, I don't know. Those things probably come at a cost, how much that would cost to upgrade our system, I don't know, and I, I don't want to speak too much about it now. And then we can look into it, we can get some prices, and if it falls within something you would like to budget for.
Great.
We could, we could certainly look into that, not a problem.
Love it.
Taking notes on that, Denise?
Ethan was traumatized.
That's the first time I've ever heard, I've been in the middle school for years, and I've never heard a complaint about the.
It just becomes background noise.
I guess it's just something you're used to, right, you're just like, all right, I'm used to it, all right.
Middle schoolers are resilient.
Yeah. Well, and the best is if you're in the.
Their parents are not.
But at Media Center, you get both.
Parents are fragile.
Yeah, in the Media Center, you get both bells, you get the bell for the middle school and the high school if you're in the Media Center.
Yeah.
Also, at back to school night, they're running, I imagine they're running every few minutes, right, versus every, like, a, a longer period of time, so. And kids, it's just background noise to kids, like you said, it just.
It is, but to Allison's point, there are some students who are startled, certainly, I know some of the students we work with still get startled, even though it's a daily thing. But, you know, if we do this, if we have money somewhere for this, um, maybe a student survey, what kind of sounds would you like? Let's, let's play with this a little bit, if we, you know, really want to.
Before we solicit feedback on what sounds they like, we should look at how much it would cost to upgrade our current system, because.
Exactly.
My, my guess is that because it's so antiquated, it's not just the software, it's probably the whole system. And I know when we upgraded the one at, uh, Irving, was very expensive.
Yeah, we believe it.
So.
All right.
Tuned.
I, I look forward to the next report.
Make sure there's no large buzzer to sound it out.
You think cell phones were bad, when did you hear me about the bell?
Okay. I love it. But also, thank you for the positive feedback, though.
Yes, you'll need to see it. Mm-hmm. Yeah.